Eric, how are you?
Sorry, I was muted. Doing fine. How are you doing?
Good, good.
Happy we're not in Texas.
We have, we had neighbors across the street. They were tenants for a few years and they moved to Austin late, late last year. And then we have another couple that own a house that are in temporary assignment in Austin.
And probably pretty unhappy. The thing is, some people in Texas have problems and some don't. If they're in the part of Texas that wants to be free of regulation, they're freezing to death. If they're in parts that are on the grid, like El Paso, for example, or where Ted Cruz lives.
Yes.
They're fine, right? No problem.
Well, there's one, there's one couple, I sent him a note the other day and she responded that it was like two degrees above zero, and her husband and two girls. They were from New York, so they're used to some cold, but.
Yeah, I remember one time I used to go to a convention that was held between Christmas and New Year because that's hotel rooms in various places like Chicago, New York, whatever. And it was Chicago and I was on some floor and I looked down and they had one of these rooftop swimming pools several floors down and it was filled with snow. And for a native of California, you know, where it snows only in clearly designated ski areas, this was a real shock to see a swimming pool filled with snow, but that's the way it was. I think this is why I don't live in Chicago.
That's right, that's right. Oh, Shelley, who else is there? Marilyn?
Good evening.
How's everybody?
Good, good, good. No complaints.
You look very relaxed, Shelley.
I, this is my favorite place because all day I sit at my desk on Zoom. So for these meetings, I, you know, I settle in. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, that's a problem is how to, how to, how to do that. I'm getting a new webcam because I've got, I have to do this on my laptop because the only thing that has a camera.
Oh, yeah.
But I've got a new webcam because for a long time you couldn't get a webcam for love or money. I mean, they just were out. But I got one. It's coming from Amazon and, and of course, not in time for this meeting. But I've got, what you can't see behind you in front of me is a three screen display, you know, where I do a lot of my. So why not have a webcam there? So, you know, we can, I can see everything in front of me instead of having, you know, I've got the iPad over here and you over here and three blank screens behind you, you know? So next time I'll have a webcam where I can, I can, you know, look like a real person. Then I'm going to have to investigate these backgrounds, but the backgrounds are, you know, you put your head back and you disappear in them.
I, I have a webcam. I really like it. But yeah, it's a problem with the backgrounds as they disappear.
Right, right. Well, what you see behind me is real. I mean, that's unfortunate, including the mess that my wife thinks is terrible. But I think it just doesn't look real.
You know, I don't know if you watched the local news tonight, but this is a really good time. There was a on mic big faux pas at a school board meeting in the East Bay where the board members didn't realize they, the meeting was still live and public and said some pretty disparaging things. So, you know, we always have to have a sense of decorum when we're on and be careful what we say because these are public meetings and they're recalling the entire school board.
Yeah, no, and, and it is, by this time, we should all have figured out how to unmute. We never will. And more importantly, we have to learn when to mute.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that's, that's, that's the thing. No, that's true. It's, I, you know, as Willie Brown pointed out, he's a very smart lawyer, the E in email stands for evidence.
Yeah.
Right? You don't, you don't do anything that could be public that you don't want to explain. And you don't want to have to explain anything.
That's right.
Because if you're explaining, you've already lost.
I feel the same about voicemail.
Yes, yes, yes. Talk to people, right? Don't record it. Don't have anything available that anybody can see.
That's right.
I use a laptop also and I have connectivity with our 60 inch television. But rather than to put the, take the laptop into the family room and then connect it, which takes two minutes. I just really focus here, but I should do it the other way.
Yeah, yeah.
Hello, John.
Hey, John.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Good to see you all.
John, this is Guido. Before, before we take roll, I was just trying to identify everybody. So I have a phone number 245-425. I didn't know who that was. You could identify yourself. 650-245-6425.
Could be a real member of the public. We might have some of those today.
Right.
Yeah.
It's labeled as.
I mean, I mean, since both, both the Daily Post and the Town Crier had articles about the, the, one of the items on our agenda. We might, we might have some, some members of the public.
Marilyn, or which project are you here for today? Marilyn, this is Guido from the city. Okay, those are the only two unaccounted for. So John and Chair Ahhi, whenever you guys want to start.
Okay, yeah. Call to order Planning Commission meeting for February 18th, 2021. It seems that we have a quorum, but I'll let John call roll.
All righty. Thank you, Chair Ahhi. Chair Ahhi?
Here.
Vice Chair Bodnar? Vice Chair Bodnar, we don't. Let's see your president at the moment. Commissioner Doran?
Here.
Commissioner Merrick?
Here.
Commissioner Mitzinger?
Here.
Commissioner Roche?
Here.
And Commissioner Steinley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, great. So first up, public comments on items not on the agenda. So if anyone has a comment, I know there's a few members of the public on the line. Just let us know and you'll have two minutes. Anyone? I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Nope.
Okay, so I will close that item. Next up, the consent calendar. So Planning Commission minutes from January 21st, 2021 and February 4th, 2021. So does anyone have comments on these minutes or would like to make a motion to approve them?
I'd be happy to. Sorry, Richard, go ahead.
I had a question. We didn't have a meeting on the 4th. That was the one that was canceled because of the audio and TV that has any bearing on us.
Yeah, we, we would ask you to approve the minutes in front of you because they do just reflect the actions of the commission that evening to continue all the items.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have one, one, one small correction to make for the minutes of January 21. On page two, under public comments, we should probably change Robert Phillips to Roberta.
Thank you.
Yeah. So apart from that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right.
And I'm going to move that we approve both sets of minutes on the consent calendar.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes on the consent calendar and that's subject to the correction to the minutes of January the 21st. So Chair Ahhi?
Yes.
Chair, I mean Vice Chair Bodnar, I don't know that she has joined us yet. Commissioner Doran?
Yes.
Commissioner Merrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitzinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Roche?
Yes.
And Commissioner Steinley?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, great. So next up, public hearing for Title 14 zoning amendment, public land protection ordinance. And I'll hand it over to staff.
Thank you very much, Chair Ahhi, John Biggs with your community development department. We have this evening for the Planning Commission's consideration and ordinance that would put in place a requirement that once this, this particular overlay district is applied to a piece of city owned land and it's called the public land preservation overlay district, that would require voter approval to either sell or transfer title of the property or once applied, it would require that there be voter approval to remove that PLP designation again, once that's applied. And this is all intended to provide some protections to city lands and make sure that the community is involved in decisions regarding public properties. This is one of the council priorities and we've gotten some feedback from the city council members at meetings in 2020 that this is the direction that the council would like to take. Given that this is an amendment to our zoning code, the planning commission does need to weigh in and make a recommendation. So we're asking you to take a look at the ordinance this evening, receive public comment on the ordinance, deliberate the merits of the ordinance and then make a recommendation to our city council. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission has.
Great. Thank you for that. Any questions for staff from any?
I have a couple of questions on the proposal. Oh, sorry, let me put my camera on. Was it considered to do an advisory vote of the citizens rather than a binding vote?
No, that wasn't something that was considered. It was to try and put in place some, some protections that the council could implement on, on public properties. There was, was a request by one council member to require that a super majority vote of the council be, be voted on before this, this overlay district be applied. And given feedback from our city attorney, that's not something that can be done because this is an amendment to our zoning code. The gap of this overlay district would be an amendment to our zoning map and the same, same rules would apply for amending other sections of the code or that zoning map.
And John, there isn't any legal issue, aren't any legal issues with it being a binding vote rather than a non-binding vote?
Not that I'm aware of. Or, you know, we've worked closely with our city attorney's office on the draft of this and none of that was, was raised as an issue.
And it excludes leases. So you could effectively put a 99 year lease on, on the property and keep renewing that and it would not fall under this ordinance? Is that correct?
That, that is correct. There was, the city does lease certain elements of city property. I think the, the antenna or the tower near the police station is probably the most visible example of that. But yes, you're correct. The ordinance does, does exclude leases.
Okay, one last question. If I, if I'm understanding this right, it's basically the city council appears to be saying, we want to negate measure C, which was a citizen vote to say, we don't want to have to vote on this. By now saying, we're going to ignore that citizen vote and require a citizen vote to do something else now at Civic Center? Am I kind of interpreting that correctly?
No, this, this really kind of came out of a request to the council to re-designate portions of the Civic, Civic Center site, the, the ball fields, the baseball field and the soccer field at the Civic Center site. But in, in reviewing that, it became kind of, and it would have been a, a a re-designation of those properties so that they were subject to the ordinance that the council passed back at the time that measure C was being considered. But in order to separate those pieces of land away from the Civic Center would have required a subdivision map. We were looking at surveys that would identify where all the buildings in the Civic Center location were, where the relation of those buildings were in relation to property lines that would have been created by this subdivision, looking at easements where utility lines come in. And it became one very expensive proposition to take through the process. And two, it would have created certain non-conformities because we would have had property lines closer to some of the existing buildings than is permitted by the zone district that this is in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
I have a couple if no one else has.
Okay.
The staff report talks about the Civic Center and I, I've been to all the meetings. So I know that this really is about the soccer field when you come right down to it. And Hillview Park, that's what initiated this discussion. And the ordinance itself refers to all public, city owned lands, which is obviously more than just Civic Center or the, any part of it. So I'm just, I guess I'm curious to what, this seems to, the ordinance itself seems to have a broader focus than the staff report suggests. It's all city owned lands. Is that, that's, is my understanding correct?
That, that is accurate. So it would apply to, as you noted, all city, oh, city owned land, not just the Civic Center complex, but all the land that the city owns. And last time I looked that number up, there's about 58 properties in Los Altos that the city owns.
So there's an overlap with this and the existing ordinance that was passed back in 2018, number of which is, he said, looking at his notes, 14.66.271, which effectively does the same thing with respect to open lands and parks.
Right. It, 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 that ordinance protected properties, city owned properties that had a parks or other open space, a land use designation, not, not designation, but the general plan land use designation.
So I guess part of my question is why not just amend that statute instead of that ordinance, instead of coming up with a new ordinance? Because it would seem that you have two that do the same kind of thing. I guess that's a joliet question in a way, but.
It kind of is, but I think it gets back to the original path that got us to the ordinance. It's in front of the commission this evening, which was that there is a desire to protect both the, the ball fields at the Civic Center complex. But that had its own complications. And this seemed to be the, the best course of action that we could think of in terms of a set of zoning regulations that the council could use if it wanted to protect land that the city owns.
Right, because what this does is give the, the council power to do things. It doesn't create the protection itself specifically for any property at this point.
Right.
Right. Because I guess the other question was why not just an ordinance that says all city lands fall into this? I mean, I, I, you know, I mean, if the idea is to keep us, keep from building, you know, from, from alienating selling or otherwise getting rid of city land without voter approval, why not just an ordinance that says voter approval is required for alienating any city owned land?
Well, I think going, going back to the ordinance that was adopted some time ago in this ordinance, the overreaching effort is to try and protect park and open space land. The city owns land that goes beyond just that park and open space designation. It has the land that has the PCF, the Public and Community Facilities zoning designation, which actually covers most of the parking and park and open space sites, but it also has land that has the CRS designation, the apartment clauses in the downtown, for example. Some land the city owns has an R1 designation. So it gives, gives a little more discretion and gives the council to kind of specify which, which parcels or pieces of land should be subject to this rather than just say they all, the city should be subject to this.
Okay, that, the variety, of course, is there. Okay, I have a few, few other things I'll save for, I think, the comment time. I think those are the questions I had. Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Sure.
Given, and I don't know what the other 58 properties are, but given that we're going to be having a discussion at some time in the near future, what's the impact of 999 Fremont? That we're looking at, going to be looking at what to do with. And I know there's been lots of discussions over the years as to what the residents think, but will this ordinance, then if we decide to, if the city decides to sell 999 Fremont or whatever, then we're going to have to go to the voters if this is approved? We're going to exclude that or?
That, that's a really good question because 999 Fremont is a piece of land that the city does own. And if this, this set of, this ordinance in front of the commission gets adopted or adopted by the city council and recommended by the planning commission, it doesn't automatically apply to all the properties. It, it only applies when the council applies that overlay to properties. So if the council doesn't apply this overlay district to 999 Fremont, then it would know it would not be subject to
Great, thank you.
these restrictions.
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
I think I'm still not clear how this differs from measure C or maybe is, is this, is this just sort of an end run around measure C because we're carving out smaller pieces or is there something else that's going on?
No, no, not at all. It actually is, gives a council broader discretion than measure C because they could apply it to any city owned piece of property, whether it have the the parks and community facilities owning designation or a different zoning designation or a different general plan designation. Measure C applied to city owned land had that park and open space designation. So this, this potentially could be used across a broader spectrum of city owned land. If, if the council chose to apply this overlay district to those properties. And each, each one would need to come through on a, a public hearing. You'll notice that we don't, tonight have in front of the planning commission, a, a map that applies this overlay district to any specific public property right now. The city owned property, I should make that clarification. But if the council adopts this, we will be coming back with a request to apply this overlay district to the Civic Center site. And that's, that's the only direction that we've received from council right now with respect to properties that it should be applied to in the immediate.
Can I ask a sort of a follow up question to that? Does, is this allowing essentially a council majority, so three individuals to permanently alter the ability of future councils to make decisions on properties without getting and investing a huge amount in getting a vote on, then changing that going forward. So three council members could permanently alter the ability of future councils by a similar vote to do what they, what the city wants to do with certain properties?
Yeah, it, it's putting it, it would take a, a majority of the council to apply this overlay district to a piece of city owned land. So as you say, three is the majority of council. And it, it doesn't necessarily say that it's going to restrict council members in the future. It just says that there is going to be another step in the process if they would like to do something like transfer title of the land for whatever reason. And, and we, we, in all honesty, we have nothing on the books right now. We have no plans that I'm aware of to do any transfers of title or sell of city property. This is a piece of legislation that is being put in place to help protect those lands and give the voters the opportunity to weigh in on the decisions to, to change or sell those, those pieces of land to his title.
Can I ask, sorry, John, when you said there was one other step, I'm not sure. What's the additional step you're referring to?
The, the additional step is that once, once this ordinance gets adopted, we would then come, come back to you with a request to apply this overlay district to the Civic Center site, the entire complex, everything from San Antonio Road over to Hillview and Compassing where City Hall sits and the police station and the community center, parking lots, library and so forth. So that's, that would be a map, generally a zoning map amendment.
I see, but, but so sorry. So for, to the answer to Renee's question though, is that, is that yes? That if this council applies the overlay to that and future councils cannot, they are unable to undo that? Is that correct?
That's correct. It would take a vote of the people to do that.
Just to even go even more granular, let's say you apply the overlay over all of the properties you just described and we decide we, our, our library, we want to use it for an additional function. Like, let's say we want to reconfigure the space in some way to add, add, add something. Would that be, in order to accomplish that, would a future? Would that be, in order to accomplish that, would a future council have to go to a vote to invest the money, the time, the effort to get a vote of the entire population to make that kind of a decision?
No, only, only if the council, for some reason, felt they needed to sell or transfer title of that land to another person or entity. The, the underlying standard zoning regulations still apply, and we would go through the similar process much like we did with the, the Emergency Operations Center where that particular building took a use permit, and there was an exception to our setback requirements in design review. Planning Commission reviewed it, and it went on to the city council for consideration. If someone wanted to do something similar to the library, same process, that, that would not trigger a vote of the people.
Okay, so let me try to, sorry, I, I'm asking this question, I'm trying to understand what problem we're trying to solve. So looking at it differently, if a future council wanted to sell or transfer title to another entity, is, is it really possible for them to accomplish that without, like, a, a lot of, I mean, first of all, has it ever happened that like a majority of three has somehow sold or transferred title to a property that, that wasn't supported by our city attorney or staff and a whole host of other elected, you know, people? And is it really as simple as them just, oh, let's sell the library? And it feels like we have guardrails already. I'm trying to understand how this is, that, that we want to really get something that would go before the voters on top of it.
Um, well, it, to directly answer your question, not in, in my tenure of the city, have I seen that take place? But I believe there's a concern that it could take place in the future and to get the public to be able to weigh in on that potentiality. That's why this is being moved through the process.
And not to jump into this discussion area, but school districts have done that. They've sold school sites. We don't have enough kids. We need to close the school down. They sell the school site. And, you know, either that's controversial or not. This would be analogous to doing that, as I understand the question is, and, and, and the current situation. And, and then, you know, sometimes it comes back that the, the school district then needs further schools, and so they have to go buy land at, if they can find any, at, at an extraordinary price, because now they have to build a school when they sold off because blah, blah, blah. So, but this would be analogous to that. And, and I don't think, I don't know how often cities do it, but school districts, it does happen. So.
John, can, can I chime in, John?
Yeah, I think the chair says.
Oh, okay. The, the wrinkle with this is, this is just an ordinance, and a future council can repeal this ordinance. So in the future, it, it's not binding. Had we taken this to the vote to initiate this, this as an initiative, and the people approved it, like that Measure C or whatever was proposed a while ago, I wasn't here, but if the voters would impose this type of restriction without being able to sell or lease land without a, without a vote, if the voters had put this in, then that would actually have to have a vote of the people to remove that legislation, because that would have been an initiative, a voter-initiated or a council-initiated initiative. This is just an ordinance, and so it is future direction, but a future council can always repeal this ordinance and have it not be binding. So I want to make clear, this isn't the same as if the voters put this in and only the voters can remove it. So it's not as binding on the future. And then about future sales, there are sale of land statutes where you would have to make findings of a public benefit. And we would also be subject to, I believe, to Surplus Lands Act, where we would, before we sold it, we would have to go through a notice process. And that Surplus Land Act has just been recently amended in 2020. So there are other safeguards to selling off publicly-owned land. And, and people probably don't want to hear this, but it's all tied into HCD, and they want inventory of land or, or housing, future housing. And so before you can sell off publicly-owned land, you need, now need to give different notice provisions and, and you also have to notify HCD. So, but there are, you know, Ronnie, you're asking if there's safeguards. There are future safeguards. And I just wanted this planning commission to understand, this isn't as binding as if the voters put it in place. This can always be repealed by the council at any time with a three-two vote. Can be put in place with a three-two. It can be removed with a three-two.
Question, Julie, is that the case if they, if there is an overlay district and the citizens have voted on it saying, we don't want anything sold there, the council then has to abide by that? Or can they then retroactively say, no, we're changing the ordinance?
The, like a single-story overlay?
Yeah, in this case, once the voters have voted on something, the only way you can get rid of it is to have another get.
Another vote, yeah. Yes, and, and a lot of cities do this with hillside preservation. They do, and you can't, you can't develop in certain sections of the, the hillsides and unless you get a vote of the people. And the hills outside of Malpitas, Fremont, Malpitas, those hills, they have a lot of those development restrictions placed on them by the people. And, and, and a lot of agencies do it for parks. They don't want parks being sold off. And so they do it by initiative. And so before they want to, the city wants to sell or develop it, it has to go to the people.
Okay, I'm still just a little puzzled then. If a city council can remove this at any time, why are we doing it? I mean, what's the plus of this?
I think it was, John, you know, it was council's direction, wasn't it? It was, it came up, it, wasn't it, from one of their last goals or something? I mean.
This, this is an element of their 2020 priorities. And, and as I mentioned earlier, it was to provide opportunities to provide greater protections to parks and open space land.
Which they can remove at any time with a three-two vote? Is that correct?
They can remove.
Am I understanding this properly?
It's like, it's like theater. It's like, you know, protection theater.
May want to correct me, but they, they can remove this overlay districts from our zoning code. But once, well, Julie, that's a good question. If they, if they take this provision away, would it still the sites?
You'd have to be forward-looking.
So it's only an amendment, right? You'd have to amend the zoning map, John, right?
Right.
To, to remove it from a particular parcel, right?
But, but I, I think that if a, if something had been designated as being in this overlay, and subsequently the council decided to remove the ordinance, that would not change the status of the overlay. That would have to be changed by a vote of the citizens. If I'm correct. Julie, this is, it's time for you to tell me whether I'm nuts or not, but I think that's, that, that would be the case.
That's what this ordinance says, but if the city council didn't want to put it to a vote of the people, they could just rescind it. So it, it doesn't have the binding effect as a initiative, so.
Well, no, but I mean, if, if, let, let's say they just said, we're not going to do this anymore. We've done enough, whatever, for whatever reason, would the existing overlay at the time of the vote then be annulled by the vote? Or would that still exist, at least for those properties and not going forward? I guess that's, that's one question. It might be addressed sort of Susan's, Susan's question. If that's the case, if not, then she has a question.
The city council can, I mean, John, you can clarify this, but the city council can, and Guido, they, they can, if they put in a zoning overlay, they can always repeal that zoning overlay.
Right, so it doesn't exist anymore. Is that right? It doesn't exist anymore at that point?
Yes.
I've, I've got a question, because that doesn't, that doesn't, I don't, according to my reading, that doesn't match with what it says in the proposed ordinance, where it says to remove it, you'll need voter approval.
Well, that's, that's, that's the intent of this ordinance, but from what I understand is we could always still repeal it.
But would the repeal have only future effect, or would, would it undo everything that was done under the ordinance before? I mean, let's say, let's say the, we, we designate the Civic Center as, as this PLP district, and then a subsequent council says, we're going to repeal this ordinance. Is the Civic Center then no longer protected by the, we're talking about things like the soccer field and the Heritage Orchard and places like that that are not designated as open land, open space or, or parks. And that was one of the things that was of concern here. You know, is, is that then undone? Or does that, does that protection still remain for those spaces that have been specifically designated by the city council pursuant to this ordinance under this, this overlay district?
That, that is how the ordinance is drafted, but I'm just saying that it can, if the council doesn't, you know, the council can always go back and repeal this ordinance. So, and that would go for, I, I believe, for future. I mean, I haven't, yeah, that.
Well, for future would clearly be, but I mean, the, the, the past, if something's already designated for this overlay district, would they just put an end to the overlay district and only those things that have already been designated be included in it, or would it remove that designation completely from those lands that have been put under it? That's, that's, I guess, the question here.
Yeah, that, it should apply, it, yeah. We would have to go.
It's hard to say, though, I would say.
Well, I mean, would, or would it be, would it require a vote of the citizens to, to undo that particular protection for those particular lands? I guess that's, that's the question. I mean, either way, I think Richard and I were reading it the same way. No matter what happens in the future, once something's been designated, it's been designated until a vote of the, you know, a regular vote, a majority of the voters say no.
Maybe that's, and I don't know if there's a legal answer to this, but, you know, maybe, maybe we need to look at adding a, some kind of legacy clause to this ordinance that says in the effect that this, this particular chapter is repealed, this PLP overlay district will remain over those parcels to which it has been applied.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I agree with John. I think we should look at that and get some more clarification to answer these questions.
Yeah, I, I agree, because, I mean, let, let's not forget, the, the, the reason that this is in front of us is because at the time that Measure C was coming up and that, that the section that I previously mentioned, which protected the open space and parkland, there was a promise, and this is specifically with respect to the, the, the soccer field, which is designated as Hillview Park, although I don't know it's actually designated, which isn't actually a park in the general plan designation. You know, it wasn't included, and there was a promise that it would, it would be protected, and that didn't happen. And so this is the council sort of trying to live up to a previous promise made back in 2018 by the now two previous councils. And, and so that's really why we're, we're dealing with this right now, in part. And I, 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 we may be hearing from members of the public about this, but that, that really is, is what got this going. Because the alternative, as I understand, John, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but the alternative was to do something specifically about the soccer field, and that got really complicated and expensive really quickly. And this, this was the, the less expensive, less onerous way of dealing with that problem. You know, so, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's where this is coming from.
Yeah, so before, before we get too far into discussion, I just want to make sure that there's no one from the public that wants to speak. So let me just quickly open it up for public comment. And if anyone wants to speak on this, they'll have two minutes.
Let me, let me unmute, okay?
Yeah.
So the first one I have is Curtis Cole.
Okay.
Curtis, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. I'm Curtis Cole. I served six years on the planning commission many decades ago. And I'm a proponent of keeping city lands. I do not like the sale of city-owned lands. But behind those two overly simple sentences lies hidden the complexity of city planning, city finances, community development, and the wise exceptions to those two sentences. Citizens and voters, for example, don't have the time to learn the details, implications and subtleties of that. Instead, they elect city council members who appoint commissioners like yourselves, who are willing to invest the time to make those considered decisions. Voters are more often moved by emotion than irrational analysis. So there was a situation once where the city would have been better served by swapping land, a half acre with a proposed development adjacent to a park, if granted, in Fremont Avenue, with a similar, similar underutilized open space across the street. Would have been lovely if you swapped those two. But that would be prohibited without a vote in this. You'd never do that in a timeframe necessary. So why are we doing this? Is this to guard against future irresponsible city council members or prevent development of the downtown in a public-private partnership? It looks like a piece to undo the decision on Measure C, which is in a funny way, in opposition to respecting the wishes of the voters, which said, don't do Measure C. So please remove the irreversible prohibition against changing a PLP zoning on some, on some areas. Respect the wisdom of future elected council members and the commissioners they appoint, and understand that we don't know what the future will bring, and imagine all the possible exceptional cases and opportunities that might arise that we'd otherwise lose. If this was applied to 999 Fremont, as somebody said, it would seriously complicate any land swap opportunities that might help fix that, that complicated intersection over there. So please recommend a different path than the zoning ordinance as it currently stated. There's no reasonable risk that the city is going to sell the Civic Center properties or, or the soccer field at Hillview. This is unnecessary and dangerous. I think what the city attorney was trying to say, as the ordinance is written, it may have a loophole, which I like, but should make it clear, which is, it takes two steps to apply this. You apply that you create the ordinance, and then you change the zoning map to make something PLP. Undo that, you'd have to change the ordinance, removing the prohibition that requires a vote to change the zoning map, and then you could change the zoning map to undo after that, unless you apply a legacy form of something like that. Again, I don't recommend you tie the hands with the future councils. You don't know what the future's like. And this situation's happened in the past. This is unnecessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Curtis. Next up, I see Roberta.
Yeah, let me unmute her chair.
Okay, and you, you have three minutes. Sorry, I misspoke. I said two.
Hi, this is Roberta. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi, so just, just to go back to a little history, because we have discussed, you know, the Hillview Park and, and the soccer field and the baseball field. And I know that this is a solution that the city attorney Julie came up with and John Biggs came up with after really a lot of thought. The thing with parks is that, you know, part of the reason that people want to protect the parks is that parks have additional protection that other lands do not have. For example, we cannot use glyphosate or Roundup in our parks. We cannot put the small cell note towers in our parks. So there are good reasons to protect our parks, especially when we have less parkland than any other city per capita, you know, on the peninsula. Land is very scarce, so we really do want to, in the best way we can, and I believe that Julie and, and John Biggs have come up with the best solution that they could possibly come up with to protect the parklands, like I said, as promised. The other ones were, you know, Grand Park was basically zoned as four parcels. One was a park, and the other three parcels were single-family small homes. And that was a pretty easy one to fix. Paygood Drive was fixed. Lost and Shu Park was fixed. As sort of the, the Civic Center, soccer field, Hillview Park, and the orchards is more challenging. So I do think that they've come up with the best solution that they can. And I would just urge you to, to pass it. And, you know, that's, that's my opinion. I think that Curtis Cole can trust the residents of Los Altos to do their homework. I think that Curtis Cole can trust residents of Los Altos to do their homework. We have a very intelligent community who do want to be involved. And, you know, I, I do think that, you know, the more that we have housing needs and land, which is scarce, we also need parks and open space and recreational areas and activities for our youth, our middle-aged people, and for our seniors. So I just think it's common sense to pass this because it's been almost two years, and it's taken this long to get here, and I think it's about time we do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? You can raise your hand.
I have James. I'm not sure if he's, let me unmute him, Chair Ahhi. James, did you want to speak on this item? Nope. Okay. Jay Thompson. Jay Thompson, this, did you want to speak on this item? Nope. Okay. Marilyn, let me see. Marilyn? Are you there? Nope. Okay. And Roy. Roy, did you want to speak on this item?
No.
Okay. Chair Ahhi, I believe everybody's accounted for.
Okay, great. So I will close public comment, and I'll open it back up to discussion. If someone wants to start off, go for it. I don't know. Eric, you're, I see you right in the center of my screen.
Oh, yeah. I, I do have some things. I have a, a couple of things, some of which are the, the picky little copy editing things. So why don't I start with those and just get that taken care of? Hang on a second. If we look at, at the ordinance, you're there, Section 2, okay, you're right there. For one thing, I, I note that this is chapters 14.64, but all of the sections are 14.66, so maybe we want to change that to 6.4. The... I guess, in a certain sense, John, John answered one of the things that I, I had. My inclination is to send this to the council because we need the council's advice on this because I think it was done sort of, not by the current council, number one. And number two, it was done in, so, without consideration of some of the other things, and I think Roberta raised those. The, the, the initial problem was that it wasn't designated as a park in the general plan. It is apparently designated in the Parks Master Plan, which was not adopted and therefore not, did not become part of the general plan as a park, but it's, it is simply called Hillview Park, and I'm talking about the soccer field, called Hillview Park, but it's not technically a park. And thus, as not technically a park, it lacks the protections of parks, such as the use of Roundup, such as small node cell towers, and other things that are of some importance to people. Now, these can be fixed in a variety of ways, but, you know, that was, that was, I think, what was motivating this. But where it seemed to focus a lot was on the question of whether you could alienate these lands, that is, sell them, transfer them in some other way. And so that, that became, that became the focus when it wasn't the only question. And so the, the council focused on that. The question is whether the council wants to do something in some way to protect these areas, you know, outside of that, because if they were, and John, you'll correct me. If we wanted to designate these in some way officially, we would have to do a lot of work. Is that correct?
He, he means like soccer field?
Make them part of the general plan. In other words, actually designate the soccer field and the heritage orchard and some of these other places as parks. We, we, we have to do a lot of surveying. There would have to be other things that would have to be done. It would cost us money. It would take time and all that sort of thing.
That's correct, yes.
Right. And that this was an attempt to, to allow those protections, which are currently available for open space and parks as designated in the general plan, to the areas of the civic center that are not designated in the general plan as parks or open space.
Right.
Right. And that, that unfortunately doesn't take care of the thing, some of the things that the people who wanted them designated as parks also wanted. Right. It wasn't just, can you sell it, but, you know, not so much what you do with the land as what you do to the land, was, I think, the, one of the concerns. That will have to be taken care of some other way, and that might be something that the council would want to consider. I think that they, they weren't thinking about that clearly. I was at the meetings, they weren't talking about it, nobody was talking about it, they weren't thinking about it. All they were thinking about it was, can you sell it? And this is the solution to that problem. It seems to me it's a, it's a fair solution. I'm inclined to, to, to vote to move it to the city council, if only so that the city council would decide if this is what they want to do. The, the, I'm, I'm less concerned.
Just to clarify, we, everything, everything that we discuss gets moved to city council. It either goes with our support or without our support. So I think what we have to decide is whether you're going to support it or not. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And my, my inclination would be generally to support it. I think that it's a fair idea. I don't see any problem with it. I'm not as, concerned by the things that have been raised. But I, I, I think we also need to get some clarification, or they need to, to make some clarification of what they're intending to do. This is not a current council initiative. And, and, you know, they, they, it may be an opportunity to rethink some of what they want to do. But my, my inclination is to say, if this is what we want to do, I think this does a pretty good job of doing it. I, I agree that we might want to make sure that we are clear about what happens if a future council decides to undo the ordinance, what happens to the overlay and the lands that have been designated under the overlay, to decide whether or not that would also be removed. I think logically, you know, once something is designated as part of this overlay, whether the overlay exists or not, they're still designated that way, and that would have to remain absent a vote of the, of the voters. Particularly if it's only the civic center. I think that that, that is not the controversial part of it. Anyway, so that would be my thought. I think everything else that I had thought of has been discussed or brought up in one way or another. So, so that will, I'll start off with that. How about that?
Okay. Roni, did you want to go next?
Sure. I, I have a different, I think, position on this one. I, I don't, I can't support it. I haven't heard a compelling reason why this would be something that we would want to implement. I thought Speaker Curtis Cole gave actually a compelling reason for why we wouldn't. And the one example he gave of an instance where we would actually really have been hampered in our ability, or were ham, you know, to accomplish something that would have been beneficial. And in terms of protecting our parks, I, I mean, that's the same rationale that was given for Measure C. And, you know, what we, what, what I think the majority of the city voted was to reject that. There was this argument that, you know, our parks are somehow in danger. They aren't. They haven't been. There's no history of them being in danger, being sold, and there's no plan for them being sold. And so the fact, the fact is that this ordinance is not limited to parks. It's all public land. And so, you know, at best, based on what I've understood, it's like protection theater to the extent that we pass, this council passes it, the next council undoes it. But at worst, it's like a subversion of, of a majority vote. I mean, we voted on this, this issue, and this is subverting that, or an attempt to, it feels like. So, and if it's not, then it's not even effective. It doesn't accomplish. So I, I just don't see a compelling reason. I, I, of course, it will go to city council, but I'm not supportive.
Okay. Thank you for that. Shelley, did you want to go next?
Sure. And I don't really have a lot of comment to add, except I agree with Commissioner Bodnar for several reasons, but Mr. Cole made a very compelling point, especially relative to future development and a way the city can look at implementing public-private partnerships, maybe on some of the underutilized assets that we have. So I'm generally not supportive because I think that it does undo something that we have already done.
You know, the one other, another, one other thing I meant, I meant to add is that it sounds like we have guardrails already in place to protect our parks, and we, we should feel good about them because we've never actually sold any of our parks. So they are working. That's another argument, I think.
Right. To me, and there's too many questions that are left unanswered by us, and will be able to be a hotbed issue for the council, getting, you know, having them approve it, and then having another council undo it. And then I did want to clarify something, though. We mentioned a few minutes ago about the overlay not being able to be undone. I was under the understanding that no matter if this action passes, and there was an overlay, that because it's an ordinance and the overlay applies to that ordinance, you could actually undo the overlay. Is that correct, Jolie?
That's, that's the part that we're not sure about.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the question.
What?
Yeah.
Finding as if it was a voter-initiated ballot measure. Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Susan, did you want to go next?
I'll, I'll go. I agree that I think this is an overreaching way to approach the problem. You know, I think all of us want to protect our parkland and our soccer fields and everything else, but this ordinance goes way beyond that. And I'm not sure it's solving the problem that we all seem to think may or may not be out there in the future. And I actually thought, one of Eric's comments is one of the most compelling reasons not to support this, when he said, you know, "It's not the current council's initiative." That's the whole point of electing a council, is that we elect our council on a two-year cycle, and that's how we decide as a community what direction we want to take. And this, I think, you know, Commissioner Bodnar brought this up during the earlier questions, that you're basically saying three people can hamstring any reasonable decision going forward, perhaps in 20 or 30 years. That's not good public policy. And if we want to protect our parkland, maybe there's a better way to do it. I know, John, you said it's expensive to go through that process, but having a citizen vote to decide public policy is also expensive. And I also think, given that Measure C passed by, I think it was a 52 to 48% vote, that to me was compelling, that the citizen spoke at that time and said, "This isn't the approach we want to take. We want our city council to make this decision." So I am not in favor of supporting this.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Richard, did you want to go next?
Thank you. I think we ought to just send this thing back to city council. I'd really, and come, take a look at it, see if they're even interested in doing it. I've got real questions on the, on the overlay, as others did. It needs a big clarification, but what if you remove it, the voters repeal of it? Is that necessary or is it not necessary? There's just too many questions. And, and along with the Measure C, and one of the early speakers brought up, we're really trying to circumvent the, the intent of the, the voters in, in Measure C. I don't know what the answer to all is, but I'm certainly not in favor of this as the way it's written. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. David, did you want to go next?
Oh, yeah, thanks. I agree with everything that Commissioner Bodnar and now others said. I, I don't think, I don't think I have anything to add, but I, I agree with all of that. And just listening to the conversations in the Q and A, it seems that it's not clear what it's intended to do, but it's just hard to understand why they would do it in two years after the vote. It just does seem like they're trying to get around that, that vote, which is, doesn't seem right exactly. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I think, you know, what everyone has said, I think, has been spot on. I, I think that this initially came about because I think that the civic center was, was something that wanted to be protected. But, you know, I, I think that with the way that this is presented, I could see it being used kind of in another way, unfortunately. 999 Fremont was something that I thought of as I was reading this because I, I, you know, it came across in my mind that that could be used, the designation could be used, and then, you know, we'll, we'll have some issues with that. So, so, yeah, I think it is confusing, but, but I do think that the initial idea of wanting to protect the civic center was, was good. I thought that that initial thought. But, but I don't know if this is the way to do that. So I, I don't know if it's something where we should ask the council to kind of take another look at it. Or, you know, maybe they have second thoughts about kind of what their feelings are now. What would you suggest? Because it, it seems like we don't have full support. So what would you suggest, John and Jolie?
Well, I, I think the, the commission has a couple of paths available to it right now. One is to make a recommendation to the council that this ordinance not be adopted as, as drafted. Or the other alternative is that you could refer it back to staff to explore, including some kind of legacy language to clarify that the PLP designation remain in place on a piece of property to which is applied if, if this particular chapter has to get rescinded. And, and then there's, there's also, I've heard some comments about this being applied to all city-owned land. You may ask us to go back and look at it. Maybe it would only apply to city-owned land that has the PCF, or Public and Community Facility Zoning District designation, or that public institutional or park land use designation. So it kind of would, would provide some, some additional parameters and limits on what this, this language could be applied to. And, and I don't know if you want to, as a commission, look at potential changes like that. We're certainly could go back and take a look at the ordinance that you're looking at this evening, make those modifications and bring it back to you, and see if that is enough that would allow you to support it. Or again, maybe you're just not feeling comfortable supporting a, a set of rules like this, if it does include those additional items.
Well, let me, let me just, I guess, ask the other commissioners, if, if this, if this PLP was only applying to the civic center, with, and, and it wouldn't apply to any other city-owned property, it would just be for the civic center. Is that, you know, is that something that the commissioners would, would think makes sense? Or do you guys just not like the, the idea whatsoever? Because I guess that might determine how we kind of look at this.
Let, let me start with that by, and this will be partly a response to what some of the others said. We already have an ordinance that was passed by the council in 2018 that extends these protections to certain lands, certain public lands. All this does is extend it to all city-owned lands. So it's an extension of an existing ordinance, which has the same protection, requires the same voter approval, and has the same exception for housing needs as imposed by the state. So this is not something new. It's just an extension of that. That's number one. Number two, to, to address the 999 Fremont issue that Curtis and others brought up, that would require a finding or findings by the council in favor of this designation. There would be a hearing and that sort of thing. So the council can do whatever it wants with that. But I, I think that's, that's something of a red herring in this case. The question is, are we going to extend protections that already exist for certain public lands, city-owned lands in the city, to city-owned lands generally? And as John has pointed out, there are lots of different city-owned lands. Obviously, some, it would make no sense to extend this to. Some, it might make more sense to extend this to. Which is why I asked the questions about why doesn't we do, just say the city civic center? Why don't we just say, "Extend it to all public lands willy-nilly?" And the answer is, this is something that the council can consider. It is still not clear. I mean, I, I, I think the way that the, the ordinance is written, it ought to be that whatever is, is done is already done, but that might need to be clarified or, and, and looked at. And that's a question. I mean, if it can be undone, done and undone, you know, then, then this seems like a silly exercise. If it can be done and it can't be undone except by a vote of the citizens, then that at least does that. To the extent that this is Measure C redux, again, my point is, the council already did that in 2018. They put in the no alienation protection for certain things. That did not include everything, certainly in the Civic Center, and that's, I think, the, the focus of, of the recent discussion. But this simply extends the scope of that protection to other lands that were not included in that, that statute or in that ordinance. So, you know, this, this, the, 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 the boogeyman that's been raised, I think, is, is to some extent an illusion. So that, that's what I would say. My, my thought is, we, this certainly needs some clarification. I would support sending this back to staff and letting them work on some of these issues and see if they can come up with something that does that. I could equally see supporting something for the Civic Center because I don't think anybody's really discussing other places like 99 Fremont or, or other ones. And I, I doubt very much that the scenario that Curtis came up with, as clever as it is, is actually going to arise. If, if somebody's going to do something with 999 Fremont, they're, they're ready to do it. This would have to be designated as part of this overlay district first, before anything else happened, and it's unlikely that it would happen in that order, it seems to me. So that, I, I, I think that that, 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 that isn't a compelling argument against it. I can see arguments against it, and that certainly is something the council is going to have to consider when it, when it gets it. I just, I just do not think that that necessarily is, is dispositive. So I'm, I'm inclined to support it, to support going to staff for some clarification, and then we'll see what happens after that.
I, I take a somewhat different view. I do not think, again, it is good public policy to have anything have a binding citizen vote for something like this. And so I would not support anything that requires that. If you want to do an advisory vote, I might be open to that, but I think a binding citizen vote for decisions that should be made by the elected city council is bad public policy.
I, I agree with Susan, and I think that if something doesn't make, make sense broadly for our city, why apply it narrowly? Just because, I mean, it's like, we think this isn't a good idea, so let's limit its utility as much as possible, but why do that? Why not just eliminate it? We don't support it. Why is it, why is it useful for, and also, the idea that our city hall is somehow in jeopardy of being sold just seems absurd to me. Like, there's no sense in putting this. It's just feels like a waste of time.
I, I, I would just add that I agree it's not good policy, but, but also it's, there was already a vote on it. And so we're just, I don't see how this isn't an end run around that vote. And I think someone on this already pointed out, there's a great irony in the fact that this whole thing is about getting a popular vote, and here we are just trying to find an end run around the popular vote. So I don't, I, I don't think I would support it in, in any of these iterations.
Okay. Um, it, it, to me, it kind of seems like there is a majority that maybe doesn't mind it basically kind of not going back to staff. So I'm just kind of, maybe the other commissioners can, can speak up if they have any last comments about this, but I guess it's a matter of if we want to send this back to staff, but it doesn't seem like maybe we want to at all. We just kind of want to not recommend it. But I don't, I, what would happen then? Would it go back to, to council or?
Yeah, I, I think in the alternative to referring it back to staff, there should be a motion to recommend that the council not adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
But it should go up to the council.
Sure.
Right. Yeah, that would be the recommendation we would take to council. We'd still have the ordinance in front of them, but that would be the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay.
You, I have a question. Sorry. Do you detail all of the notes and the conversations that we've had this evening about why we're, we are not recommending adoption?
Uh, yeah, I think in this instance, because you're not recommending adoption, we should elaborate more in the comments of the commissioners rather than just do a, kind of the abbreviated minutes that you look at at your meetings.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. If someone wants to make that motion, then we can.
I'll make the motion. I will make that motion not to, I guess, not, not to approve, but not to recommend the ordinance as drafted.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, I'm going to call.
Just to be clear, sorry, John, just to be clear, if you vote yes, you're voting against it, basically. Is that correct? Is that a fair way to put it in a, in a shorthand sort of way?
Yes.
It goes, but we're recommending against it.
It's going forward, but without, with a no recommendation. So a yes is a no.
A yes is a no. Okay.
It's a no. That's correct. Chair Ahie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bodnar?
Yes.
Commissioner Doran?
Yes.
Commissioner Merrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Mencinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Roche?
Yes.
And Commissioner Steinle?
No.
The motion passes six to one.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, next up, public hearing, CUP 19-0004 for 1074 Riverside Drive.
Chair, Chair Ahie?
Yes.
I have to recuse myself from this because it's neighboring property to my home.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know. I think Shelley, the, the city attorney, I think Shelley has to turn the video off.
Yeah, you have to, you have to leave the room. You've announced your conflict, and now you need to recute, recuse yourself, and it will be noted in the minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I guess staff presentation.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. This item is a request for a conditional use permit to create a flag lot at the property at 1074 Riverside Drive. Can you see the slides? Just?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. The 29,599 square foot site is located on the west side of Riverside Drive, which is between Oakwood Court and Berry Avenue. Hale Creek, which you can see on this map, runs nearly coincident to the rear of the property line. And this property is in the R110 zoning district, and it's surrounded on all sides by single-family residences. The proposal would demolish the existing house and the garage, and it would create an interior lot and a flag lot, which would allow construction of one residence to replace the demolished residence and one additional residence. On the face of it, the, the application for this, for this flag lot, it's a fairly simple proposal, but there are some, some kind of unique circumstances that this proposal falls into with, with regards to the underlying lots and the flood designation over this particular parcel. It was detailed in the, in the agenda report, but I just wanted to kind of quickly go over those things just to make sure you understand some of these kind of artifacts of this particular lot. Um, so you can see on this map that there, in between the thicker lines, which designates the, the property boundaries, is a thinner line, which is designating the underlying lots. And this is track map 372, which is also included in the agenda report as attachment C. And you can see here, so the parcel is comprised of lots 102 and 103 of the subdivision map, which was recorded in 1947. And per the California Subdivision Map Act, when we have a lots that are created with a recorded subdivision map, we have to consider these to be legal lots. So the creation of the flag lot and the interior lot is not really considered a subdivision like you've, you've seen in other applications for, for flag lot creations. But in this circumstance, this would be a reapportionment of the existing two legal lots, and that would move forward as, as a lot line adjustment process, and that's, that would be done administratively by staff subsequent to the conditional use permit for the flag lot approved by city council. I should also mention, and as outlined in the agenda report, and you can kind of see here, these are, these are fairly narrow lots that this subdivision map created. So these lots, if, if, if recognized as legal lots, and we would, they actually are non-conforming with regards to, to lot width. So the flag lot and interior lot would resolve this non-conforming situation. Uh, and the other kind of issue that is kind of complicates this, this lot line adjustment process for the flag lot is the flood zone designation. So we did take a look at this and realized that there is a, there, there's a flood zone map. And as you can see on this particular slide, uh, flood zone designation goes through the rear portion of the lot. So if that flag lot was created, it would look like it would take out a lot of the development potential of, of that flag lot and potentially create, uh, or exacerbate the, the flooding issues in that area. So we took a look at that, but then also realized that the, the flood zone designation, which bounds the Hale Creek, it actually is somewhat misaligned with the creek. And based on the topography survey that the applicant submitted to us, we kind of realized that this flood zone designation doesn't really look like it's, it reflects the, 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 the natural features out there. And we, we do find this throughout the city where the flood maps don't really align with, with the creek, the creeks themselves, mostly because when the maps were created, they were, it used very gross data, and when a project moves forward like this, there's very granular data with the topography survey. So in these circumstances, we recommend applicants go through what's called a letter of map amendment, and that's a process through which FEMA, and only FEMA can amend the map. And this particular applicant did go through that process. They did receive the Loma, which was included in the agenda report. And that would, and that does officially change the, the, the designation of the flood zone. I also would mention that this particular flood zone, unlike some others in the city, well, I, most people realize that, that in flood zones, there are construction and design standards that if you meet them, you can build within the flood zone. But this particular one, it, it does not have a regulated floodway. And when there's no regular, regulated floodway, you have to treat the whole flood zone designation as, as a floodway. There's much greater building restrictions in that area, and it, it could also mean outright restrictions of all buildings. There's a lot of evaluation and, and analysis that's go through that, that we have to go through with that process. So that was another reason why this whole Loma process was initiated. Regardless, what moved forward as we moved forward through that process, the Loma was adopted, and you can see here on the site plan that the new flood bound, flood area boundary was adopted by FEMA. So this is the proposed site plan for the, for the reapportionment of the lots to create a 10,756 square foot interior lot, which is represented by lot one. And then a 16,982 square foot net lot area for the flag lot as represented by lot two. Both of these would be conforming to the lot size as well as meet all the other minimum standards for width, depth, and the flag lot does have the minimum access corridor of 20 feet in width. As shown on the site plan for the interior lot, all the standard property line setbacks are just shown here. It's a rather conforming lot. I'm not totally rectangular, but a conforming lot nonetheless. And then with regards to the flag lot, flag lots in the R110 district, they do have increased side yard setbacks of 15 feet and a limitation of a one-story residence. And then with that flag lot, because of the situation with the creek, the flood zone, but both of those things combining create larger setbacks to the sides and the rears in addition to what's normally required under the zoning code. So there is a 20-foot setback to the top of bank, and that's based on the city's adoption of the, the Santa Clara Valley Water Protection Collaborative Guidelines. And then also that flood zone further restricts some of the development on that lot. So the result you can see here with the, this setbacks, and this is just a, a an example of a footprint that might fit within that, that buildable area. And so as shown here, there's about a 32 square hundred-foot building that could be built there, which is large enough for a single-family residence. With regards to the relationship to neighboring properties, the proposed flag lot access corridor will be in substantially the same location as existing driveway, and the new lots will maintain existing yard relationships with the surrounding properties. And I think that's all to say about the site plan. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend city council approval of application, CUP 190004 to allow for the creation of a new flag lot in accordance with the findings in section 14.80.060 and subject to the approval conditions. There is a draft resolution included in the agenda report as attachment A, which details all the findings and conditions. We did notice this application to the public. We have not received any. I believe the applicant is here. They don't have any formal materials, but they can certainly add any additional comments that they might have. And I can answer any additional comments that you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. If anyone has any questions for staff, let me know. I just had a quick question in terms of, maybe you had mentioned it, but the fact that they got the letter of map amendment and then, you know, the, the flood zone, is there a BFE for the AE flood zone for, for that area? In terms of what the finished floor elevation would be for, for the back lot?
So it's a little bit complex because there is a higher standard when you build within an AE zone that does not have a regulated floodway. We have to treat the whole zone as a floodway. So what you're mentioning is the base flood elevation, which typically in a, in an AE zone, we look for that plus an additional foot for a finished floor. Regardless of all that, we'd have to look at other things before we even consider building in this, in this flood zone. So there has to be a pretty detailed analysis that, that they would have to go through before even considering building in this flood zone. I won't get into all the technical details, but it, it, it is a, a much more restrictive flood zone than, than the typical AE.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I guess I was just curious if it was gonna be, because I know some cities, it's, you know, let's say 10 or 12 feet as the, as the base flood elevation. So I wasn't sure how kind of extreme this might be, but I, I guess it's more work has to be done with it. Correct. Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for?
I have one that sort of follows up. Steve, is there any requirement that Valley Water have anything to say about this? Because I suspect that they, the creek bed is theirs and the bank as well. And the flood, of course, is their problem when something happens. So do they have to sign off on any of this, or does the FEMA letter pretty much? So do they have to sign off on any of this or does the FEMA letter pretty much take care of it?
I don't believe there's any particular easements on this on this lot. So it's mostly the homeowners that are responsible for maintenance and 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 control of the land. We often, and in this circumstance, because it's in a in an AE zone that does not have a regulated floodway, if they did propose development in this area, we would have them peer review that and help us out because we don't have the expertise to analyze flood studies in this situation. So that would be our interaction with them. We have adopted that Santa Clara Valley Water Protection Collaborative, and that was one approach that the cities in the Santa Clara Valley took a few years back to basically all agree. If we all develop with the setbacks in mind, we should satisfy everybody's concerns about development near creeks.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't see any. Okay, so I I'll guess I'll hand it to the applicant if they have a presentation or if they want to say anything. If not, that's okay too, but I'm not sure if they had something to say.
Speak. Hello?
Yes. Yes, hi.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I'd like to thank Steve for helping us through this process. As it's taken us some time to receive all documents, confirmations and approvals from FEMA. We would like to acknowledge that we are aware that the real lot is located within special flood hazard area and that we have done our due diligence to ensure that we will not encroach into that zone. You've gone through the Loma with FEMA to ensure that the correct location of the flood area is noted. We hope to be able to provide housing for the city in a manner that respects the neighborhood context and privacy of those on Riverside Drive. We respectfully request that you grant our conditional use permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? I don't see any. Okay, so I will now open it up for public comment. If anyone from the public wants to make a comment on this.
Chair Ahhi, let me go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Let me ask if James wants to. James, did you want to speak on this item? Nope, okay. And Jay Thompson. Nope. And Roy. Roy. Nope.
No, no comment.
Okay.
I think I I think I see Terry Couture with her hand raised.
Okay, Olivia. Here you go, Terry.
Good evening, council members and applicants. I live at nine oh-three Parma Way with our husband, with my husband. We've been here for thirty years. This creek has flooded twice. It hasn't flooded over the banks, but it's got up to the top. I have three concerns. I'm concerned that the trees may disappear. They have on every almost every single development on this creek bank, even though the trees are protected and even though they're all on the map. Somehow in the middle of the night or over the weekend, trees disappear. I'd like to make sure that the trees are protected, that they're trimmed to make sure that they're going to last a long time because I know the people that live there weren't taking care of the trees and they may need help. There's two elms, one which already might be removed, two maples in the front and a lot of oak trees in the back. The second concern I have is the slope down to the creek. A number of developers have messed around with the slope and done unpermitted improvements. And then the city tried to make them take them out and were never successful in trying to make them take it out. So I would like to make sure that you guys protect our neighborhood, protect our creek, protect our wildlife. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Is there anyone else? I don't see anyone with their hand raised. Okay.
I don't see anybody else, Chair Ahhi.
Okay, um, so I'll close public comment and open up for discussion. So would anyone like to go first?
You're all going, break the ice.
Yeah.
Never afraid to jump in. I don't have any 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 problem with this project. It fits in. It'll be a a nice development, I'm sure. I I initially wondered why they didn't just keep the two lots and build on the two lots, except that there's this, the one on the right side has got the very narrow frontage and depth. And with the creek, it would have had some limitations on what kind of a house you could have built. Built, so I think the lot alignment and the creating a flag lot is ideal. And I'm fully in support of it.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Anyone like to go next?
I'm supportive.
Okay. Thank you. Susan, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I supported as well.
Okay. David, did you want to go?
I supported also.
Okay, great. Eric?
This strikes me as being very much like the Arroyo Road issue. It's basically a a technical call. If it meets the requirements, we have to say yes. John, is that a fair statement? Or Steve?
That is a very fair statement.
Yeah, and 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 therefore, not only am I in support of it, but having no choice, I'm in support of it.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm supportive of it as well. I think that with the base flood elevation and and kind of with FEMA, I I hope that, you know, they can come up with a a good resolution for that. It might be tricky, but I hope they can figure it out. But yeah, I think it makes perfect sense. It's thirty thousand square feet lot. It makes total sense to have two homes there. So if someone wants to make a motion to recommend approval, then we can vote on it.
Okay, you're all going again. I make motion to approve the lot split realignment at ten seventy-four Riverside.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
On the the motion, Chair Ahhi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Badner?
Yes.
Commissioner Doran?
She's recused.
Oh, she's recused. Thank you very much. Commissioner Merrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Mencinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Roche?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
That motion passes six to zero.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then so next up, commissioners' reports and comments. Any commissioners have anything they want to mention, previous council meetings or any agenda items? Oh, sorry, go for it.
I I have a question on that. Typically, there's somebody who gets to go to the council meetings. A joy which I never deprived myself of. But I I'm a member of the the bitter end club, where they're at the beginning and there till the end, even at two forty-five in the morning. But typically, there's there's somebody who gets sort of designated to be the person to be at meetings. Are we doing that or are we not doing that? That's a sort of a staff question.
That's that's a really good point. We used to have a list of rotating commissioners and we need to get that developed again and out to the commissioners. I think we took a little bit of a hiatus, given the number of new commissioners, but we will get that done.
Yeah. I think the only thing is that the objective criteria is going to council on Tuesday, next Tuesday. So I I'll be on that call, but if any other commissioners want to listen in and or say anything, I think let John know. Because it will be probably a very heavy kind of meeting. Yeah.
If I can just comment about that study session, it's actually going to be a study session and not part of the regular city council agenda for that night. So the the meeting starts at six o'clock rather than being part of the seven o'clock agenda. So they'll have an hour and it's going to be an opportunity to share with the council the work that the commission has done, the work that the consultants have done on the objective standards. And Chair Ahhi, if you could be present to answer the questions, that would be be great. And it sounds like you'll be there to do that.
Yes, yeah.
Great. And I'll I'll make sure that you are added as a panelist for the the meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Um, okay. So I guess next up, if no one has anything else, potential future agenda items.
So we have the study session with the city council on the twenty-third. And then as part of the regular agenda that evening, they are taking a look at the project at one forty Lyell. That's the five-unit condominium building that you had reviewed and made recommendations on last year. So that's that's part of the agenda that evening. At the meeting of the city council on March ninth, we hope to have a recommendation for a consultant to assist us with the preparation of the housing element update. So it'll be good to get that consultant on board and begin the the heavy lifting that we're going to need to do to get the housing element in a condition where the state can certify it. For your commission meeting on March the fourth, we have the election of chair and vice chairs that are going to be on the agenda. And then a couple, a couple of things not meeting, well, one is meeting related. I I think because we have five new five new planning commissioners, I think it might be a good opportunity for you to have an opportunity to kind of discuss amongst yourselves some of the roles of planning commissioners, what you think would work best, some best practices that we can provide for the commission. And all agenda is that for the future meeting in the future so that you get an opportunity to talk amongst yourself is almost almost like a little bit of a retreat to get to know one another, see if you can talk about things that help facilitate your your review of projects and the discussions that you have in developing recommendations or taking action on on projects. And Chair Ahhi, I'll probably give you a call and talk to you a little bit more about that to kind of maybe lay some groundwork for for that.
Okay.
And then.
We don't have to think of five things about ourselves that we have to tell everybody else has to guess. No, no.
Trevor to help us with that. Then then finally, the report on some of the planning commissioners had requested that we register them for the League of California Planning Commission Commissioners Academy. That's going to be taking place on March the twenty-fifth, the twenty-sixth, the thirty-first and April the first. And so far, we have three commissioners that are going to be attending that. And that's all going to be done by by video conferencing like we do our planning commission meetings. And you should be getting your registration confirmations about that. If you don't get them within the next couple of days, let us know and we'll we'll do some checking for you. And that kind of wraps it up for staff.
Okay, great. If no one else has anything that they want to add, it's eight thirty-five and meeting is adjourned.
John, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
A quick question.
Yes.
For the for the academy. I've not seen the agenda come out yet. I know I had a communication from them. They said it was due out. So we don't know what the agenda, has it come out yet, do you know?
Not not as as far as this afternoon, when I looked, it's looked like they were still working on that. So sometimes that comes out maybe a week or two in front of the the academy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Oh, it's okay. So yeah, eight thirty-five, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye bye.
Thanks.
Good night, everybody.